Exciting.
Same old.
We missed you at the ballgame.
I lead a boring life.
I did too.
Oh yeah, how was it?
It was fun.
Good.
It was, yeah, they won, it was a good game.
Good.
We missed you at the ballgame, we missed you. It was funny.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular council meeting for the city of Utica Tuesday, August 9th, 2022. Who did I pick? Mike Roberts, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Sikora.
Here.
Terrencey.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Ryan.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Calendrino.
Here.
We have a quorum, one is absent tonight. Tonight, we do have a public hearing at 7:45 for St. Lawrence's Apple Fest tent request. So, we're going to try to get as much done on the agenda as we can before that time. Chief, can I hand it over to you?
Sure.
Mayor, Council, I want to thank you this evening for giving us the opportunity to recognize the retirement of Officer Michael Roberts. This one's a little bit personal. I trained Mike, I was his first field training officer, as he came to the department in 1999. He's enjoyed a career that's placed him as a evidence tech, a firearms instructor, and a traffic officer with the city. These assignments have improved the safety for the city, its residents, the people who are transient through the city on a day-to-day basis, and he's left an impression on the department with his actions. He's assisted people at their worst moments, he's saved lives with CPR, tourniquets, he's removed people from dangerous situations, and he's also taken dangerous people off the roadways. He's even delivered a baby. Don't know if it was named Mike Roberts, but it definitely, it definitely took place. Throughout the years, it has been an absolute privilege to get to know him personally and professionally. Professionally, I've been fortunate enough to been at your side during vehicle chases, hectic physical confrontations, barricaded gunmen, and personally, we spend time away from work together enjoying each other's company with golf and other interests. It's now time for you to go forward with the notion that you have served the citizens with distinction. Take peace in the passing torch to the new officers who have come in behind you. The stories of your encounters will resonate with them to recite to others in demonstration of how proud they are to have worked with you. I want you to go forward now with the time that you have earned for yourself, for every minute is earned and should be treasured. I hope that you have a long, healthy, happy, cheerful retirement. Do not make yourself a stranger, and personally, I wish you best wishes moving forward. So, Mike, if you would, come down here with the mayor, we have something to present for you.
I just wanted to say a couple of words, Mike, it's been a pleasure working with you, watching you interact with our residents. One of the rare city persons that I never heard a resident say anything bad about. That's quite an accomplishment. On behalf of myself, City Council, all the city staff, and the residents of Utica, thank you for protecting us for all these years, and we all wish you a happy, long, healthy, and safe retirement. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'd like to offer to you your, your police ID as well as your service badge.
Thank you.
Enjoy your retirement.
Thanks again.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
One more round of applause for Mike Roberts. You're welcome. And if anyone was here just for that, you're welcome to leave. Or you can stay for all the excitement, yeah, it's up to you. At this point in the meeting, we open up the floor for public comments for any items that are listed on the agenda. Anyone from the public is allowed to speak for three minutes and address any items, again, that are on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address Council tonight? Nope. Unfinished business, none. Consent business, there is one item that I need to pull out of consent, which is the approval of the agenda. A very, item came in a little bit late to get into the packet, and it is a budget amendment for Parks and Rec. So, Madam Clerk, if we could make that item 12A. And I would need a motion to remove the approval of the agenda from consent business and to approve it with the change that I mentioned.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Sikora, any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. Motion carries. Now, I would be looking for a motion to approve the remaining items that are in consent business.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey, any discussion from Council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Correspondence, we have none. New business, well, the first item on the agenda is the St. Lawrence's Apple Fest request for...
It was part of consent, that's right.
Are we okay?
Yep.
The next item is, in new business is St. Lawrence's Apple Fest request for temporary tents. We need to hold our public hearing first. Ms. McGreal, is it okay to skip that until we complete the public hearing, or do I need a motion to, to amend the agenda for that as well? We're seven minutes ahead of schedule here.
Should do a motion or mandatory skip till 7:45.
All right, I would be looking for a motion to skip item 5A, which is the St. Lawrence's Apple Fest request for temporary tents until after the public hearing at 7:45.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey, any discussion from Council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Catherine DeRucci. Did I get that right, Catherine? DeRucci, I get it wrong every time. She is working on an Eagle Scout project, she's proposing building a, are we calling it a canopy?
A pavilion.
A pavilion at Pioneer Park. She's already presented at planning, and she's here tonight to share her plans with Council. Can you go to the podium?
Yeah. Can I get a seat, ma'am?
Absolutely. And as she makes her way to the podium, I know Catherine has talked to Bill Lang a bit, and he's offered her some guidance and some future assistance in completing this project. As I mentioned, she's been before planning and got the interrogation there, she did very well. Planning was very excited about the idea of, of her project, so she's here tonight to share her project concept with us on Council. Take it away.
Okay, so my plan is to build a 20-by-10-foot pavilion at the Pioneer Dog Park. The first paper you guys have is an overview of the park itself. And then, I have the closer-up plans that you guys can pass around. So... I'm mostly just looking to seek approval, so I can get started fundraising. Yeah.
And I think you're on a time restriction too, because you, if you want to explain to Council.
So, I age out, I turn 18 on October 27th, so I need the whole project done by then. But I have tons of Scout volunteers, I can put in the work, I can get it done, I know I can.
Any questions for Catherine?
What troop are you with?
So, I just moved to a new one, 1472, I think? 1402, okay. There's not a whole lot of girls around Michigan and Boy Scouts, so you kind of got to jump around to find, find one I can.
Sure. I know what her plans entail is the pavilion will straddle both the large and small dog sides of the park, so the middle of the pavilion will be right on the fence line. I know from talking to residents that use the park a lot, probably the biggest complaint is the lack of shade. So, I believe this pavilion is more for the, the dog owner, the dog parents than it is for the dogs, I'm guessing, right? To give them a place to get out of the sun as their dogs frolic and goof around in the dog park, right?
Yeah. It will be cemented down, or the bottom of it will be cemented. I know Bill Lang has offered to help us out with that. Also, the second page is the architect who helped write up the plans, they actually volunteered to help out, which is awesome.
Bill, did you have anything you'd like to add about the project, or? I'm actually just watching the clock, we got to get to 7:45 here.
No, I, I met with, with her earlier, actually, I haven't seen the, the completed drawings, but I trust whatever she's presented, that, you know, Mayor and Council have looked at it as well as planning, so it should work. I did offer potentially some assistance, depending on what she needs, to try to work with her to help her finish it, it seems like a worthy addition to the park, and if it needs a little bit of help, or even some, generally, I can find a few dollars over in the budget to, for something like that, to help out with. The idea would be to seek approval to do that as well.
And I know one item that maybe we can't completely address here tonight, I think you mentioned to me that you might want to close the park for a short time?
Yeah, because with the cement drying or building, I don't want any people or dogs to get hurt in the process, or step in wet cement, so...
We could, Parks and Rec meeting is tomorrow, isn't it? We can probably address that, get approval for that tomorrow at Parks and Rec meeting. All right, any other questions for Catherine?
I think it's a wonderful thing that you're doing.
Absolutely.
I'm very impressed. I'm impressed with your timeline.
Well, we would be looking for a motion to approve Catherine's project for Pioneer Park.
I will make that motion to approve Catherine's project.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Ryan, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries, congratulations.
Good luck. Thank you.
And again, I'll talk to, I'll be at the Parks and Rec meeting, and we also have the chairman here tonight from Parks and Rec, so we'll make sure to bring that up, about the park closure, okay? If you could, when you know those dates, when you'll be wanting to close it, make sure you get that information to Madam Clerk, okay?
Question, how do we get ahold of you for your fundraising?
Good question.
Like, email or phone number? Or?
I'm ready.
Okay, phone number is 586.
Phone number, all right.
224.
I'm sorry, 224?
Yes, 0542.
Mr. Lang?
Catherine, why?
So, in regards to closing the park, we could assist with snow fence and things like that, that would suffice to...
Maybe that'd even have to close it.
Right. So, certainly follow through with the option to close it if necessary, and if not, we can just coordinate off with snow fence and things like that to keep the dogs out.
Even better.
Or keep people away.
Even better, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and look at the time, it's 7:45, I would be looking for a motion to enter into public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by O'Donnell.
Support.
Support by Sikora, any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries, we are now in public hearing. Tonight, the public hearing is to address St. Lawrence's Apple Fest request for temporary tents for their annual festival. To give you background, they did appear before the Planning Commission, Planning Commission sent their recommendation, they did not have a quorum that evening, but they gave us their formal recommendations, as well as McComb Planner, all in support of having this event and approving their request. Do we have a representative here tonight from Apple Fest?
I'm Sam Sarah, I guess requesting permission to have the festival September 8, 9, and 10.
9, 10.
9, 10, 11. 32nd year, nothing's changing, everything's the same. Any questions? You guys have the map, we submitted a map and plans, right, Dominic?
Yeah.
It's really not, we got, we're not having the Vegas room. Right, so it's the same as last year.
Very good. And if Council has any questions for you, so we'll ask those when we get to the actual voting part of it, I just wanted you to present what, what this is tonight. Is there anyone from the public that is here to speak to this request for temporary tents at St. Lawrence Church? For the record, there's no one here to speak to this. As there's no one here to speak to this issue, I would be looking for a motion to leave public hearing and return to the regular council meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey, any discussion from Council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. We are back in regular council meeting. Since you're standing there, Sam, does any, does Council members, we're going to return to the agenda item now, does anyone from Council have any questions for the representative from St. Lawrence?
No, we've been doing this for a long time, so...
And that, and that's something we need to talk about.
Yeah, let's get through the voting, I'd like to bring that up as well.
Okay.
Is it the question I was about to ask, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is held the same weekend every year, right?
Yeah. Well, it's the weekend after Labor Day, the date's changed, but yeah.
Yeah.
And they've been doing it for 32 years.
Right.
You know, once we get through the vote, I would like to discuss finding an option for them where they don't have to come to planning and Council every year, subject to the plans being the exact same footprint as they were the previous years. Of course, they would still have to get, pull any permits, clear everything with Fire Chief Willsec and Police Chief Cody, but it seems a bit redundant to have them have to come back and, and go through this routine.
Especially like last week, when we came and we couldn't do anything.
Right. Well, that's a little out of our control, and we apologize, but...
No, I know it's not your fault, but just time constraints.
So, does anyone have any further questions? I would be looking for a motion to approve St. Lawrence's Apple Fest request for temporary tents.
So moved.
Support.
I have a question, you know, this, this came up last year, and Dominic and I talked about it, so we do this every year, right? And it's always the same date every year, same time, and we had a little bit of an issue last year, so we're here asking for permission to have this festival, same time, same time of the year, we do the same thing, we're going to do the same thing this year with the police and the fire and, and the ambulance, so you guys are aware of it, right? Do we need to call you to let you know that still, or are you, is someone going to write it down?
If you submit a request to get approval to continue the event, I, I would assume that if there are no changes, there are no changes, and that we would just make sure that our, our dates are, are consistent, we, we're usually in communication with you throughout the planning stages, just in case there are any changes or concerns about things, so, yeah, I don't see any problem with that at all.
Okay, all right, good, so we're on the same page?
Yes.
All right.
Well, I believe there was some confusion with fire last year, where...
No, it was not the fire, it was the inspection. Whoever the inspection, whoever does the inspection...
That's who does our, that's who does the inspections, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Chief?
Dominic, Dominic.
It was Building Department, it wasn't Fire, it wasn't Lot 12.
Okay. Building.
Well, you, you would still have to, whatever permits you need to pull, you would still...
We do that, right? We do the permits. And did we do it already?
We have a permit.
Okay.
So, we've asked that it be on the Building Inspector's agenda for Friday morning.
Sorry?
For inspections, so that there's nothing to nancy more than that is on the agenda either, because we can't, we can't do it before, or we can't do it after.
Can you speak into the mic?
Yeah, so we're, part of the request is, we're asking for Building Inspection, Fire, Friday morning, because we won't be ready Thursday, and the event's that afternoon, so we need somebody there on Friday.
Our Building Department's closed on Fridays.
Okay. And we can't really approve that from Council, because we don't have them here to verify their schedule.
Okay.
So, you're going to have to work through that with the Building Inspector, it's just, you know, we, we can't really vote on that here.
So, can we put a request in, the clerk, that we're there the latest on Thursday, then?
Yes, you can do that.
So, I'm sure the items that they'll have will be able to address at the very least.
Okay.
This fire, do you guys come through on Friday morning, or is that a problem? They always come Friday, you guys always come Friday. They usually do, that's why, it wasn't, the fire wasn't a problem, it was building. Yeah. So... Because I thought that when we do this, like we said, and I ask, and I always ask, is there anything else that we need to do, because I do this once a year, and this is not my job, and I always say, and I always get, no, this is it, okay, everyone knows it's going to be 9, 10, and 11, September, we got, we're getting tents, we're going to be ready on Friday, is there anything else that I need to do? I don't think there is, but... Obviously, there was last year, we were threatened to shut down, get shut down, and...
Well, we're, we're well ahead of it now, and we're aware of it, we'll address it with Building, but, you know, you also have responsibility to make sure that, you know, you're inspected as well, so, you know, we'll do our part, you do your part, we'll make sure we have no hiccups this year, okay?
Okay.
We were in the middle of a vote, can we, I don't know who made the motion?
Terrencey made the motion.
Motion by Terrencey, support by...
Townsend.
By Townsend, any further discussion from Council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries, you're approved.
Thank you.
Follow up with these, with Building, make sure you got your inspections all in place, and let's work on, we're going to work on finding a way to make this easier, an easier process for you next, next year and going forward.
Hopefully, it won't be me, but, okay.
Did you say that last year?
Yeah, I'm, I'm done, like, this is the casino, right? I'm out.
We'll see you next year.
Cast it in your chips, huh?
We're going to see you next year.
I promise you that.
You said that last year.
I promise you that, this year. Ken, I promise you.
We may see Dominic.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Take care. We'll see you there.
Good luck with the festival. Next on the agenda is the Shared Use Path Grant M-59 Pedestrian Improvements Resolution. We vote...
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I sure did. Item 5C, temporary tent and road closure for Trinity Lutheran. Can you state your name and the address, sir?
Yes, good evening, Council, my name is Jeff Piyok, I'm with Trinity Lutheran Church and School, and this year, unlike St. Lawrence, we're doing something different for our community festivals. It's not really a festival per se, but it's more of a community variety of activities. The school turned 140 years this year, and we're having a big celebration taking off on August 28th. Their next events will be September 11th, September 18th, and September 25th. On the 28th and the 18th, we're requesting it close a portion of Deshaun Street between the Car Wash and Summer Street, for some, a number of hours listed there, I think it's 8:00 AM till about 3:00 PM. And then, on Septem, I'm sorry, August 28th, we're looking to, to do a temporary tent in our, in our south parking lot, and on the other three dates, a temporary tent in our north parking lot. So, if you receive the handout that I've submitted with the maps, and each of the dates has a small summary of activities, one's the 140th year celebration, another's a 5K run through the neighborhood, another's inflatable fun thing for the kids and adults, and then the last one is yard game tournaments in the parking lot.
And road closures, if I heard you right, September 18th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and Sunday, August 28th from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
That's correct.
And have you discussed that with Police Chief Cody at all, or?
Not this year, we've done this multiple times in the past, due to COVID, we've taken some breaks, I think it's been maybe two years or so, maybe three, since we've done this last. Typically, they'll drop off barricades, and our volunteers set them up just to protect, you know, the pedestrians crossing the street, and then, when the event's over, we break those back down.
Well, why don't we get a motion, and then we can move to discussion if there's anything further? We would be looking for a motion to approve temporary tents and road closure of Deshaun Street on the selected dates.
And just, just for clarification, we're looking at Summer Street, South to Hall Road, correct?
South to would be like our last entrance point, basically perpendicular to the Car Wash, not all the way to Hall Road, because you want to use that south parking lot.
You want to access point from Hall Road to Trinity.
Exactly, yeah.
Just wanted to clarify that for Council.
Sure.
And the gas station, did they have a side entrance as well on Deshaun, or the Car Wash?
Yeah, there's a, there's an exit.
So, you won't be blocking that, right?
No, and typically, they have that coned off, it's more of an emergency exit, I think.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to approve all of the tents and the road closures for the dates that you've given us, which is for Saturdays in a row, yes.
Sundays.
Sundays.
Those are Sundays, yes.
Oh, well, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm off a day, for Saturdays in a row.
Thank you.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Sikora, discussion from Council?
Is there any type of, like, what are you exactly doing in the tents? Is there any type of stuff...
They're just food tents, we're going to have some food trucks, and just for shade and shelter for the elderly.
We, we do have a food truck ordinance, Chief, would you like to bring that up?
Yeah, the food trucks have to contact us prior to your events, and they have to be inspected by our city.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
New ordinance in town.
And there's a form you can get from the clerk's office, application form for that.
Okay.
They have to come in, I believe it's the Thursday before the event. They got to make an appointment with my inspectors when they're available.
Okay. So they come to your station?
Prior to, yeah.
Okay.
Then they'll give them the okay and then they can just go show up there. We, we don't do it the morning of in case there's a collision.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I wouldn't expect that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote please.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, sir.
Okay. Thank you all.
Yeah, I really like what you're doing. I like the way you're splitting it up. When I was reading this, I'm going, wow, this is really cool.
Yeah, it's something different. Yeah. All right. Thank you all. Have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you.
All right, department reports. I'll kick it off. Number one, for everyone listening in TV.
Mr. Mayor.
I got shirt.
Really likes skipping.
Oh, yeah. Boy, I'm really skipping on it. Five D, shared use path, the grant M-59 pedestrian improvements resolution. As you will recall, we approved a letter, or we sent a letter of support to Sterling Heights, communicating that we support the concept of the new path that's going to connect Troy to our Ironbell Trail entrance at Utica Road. Now, the actual grant application has come in. In your packet, you'll see that there's engineering. The dollar amounts are there. Utica's commitment, and I want to get these numbers right, is for $50,000. Forty thousand of that will be covered by a federal TAP, TAP grant, and Utica's contribution match will be $10,000. This path will increase our walkability and bikeability throughout Utica. It'll connect our downtown Jimmy John's and our parks. So I believe we've addressed this in the past twice now, and we all at those times agreed that it was a valuable thing to be involved with. So at this point, I would be looking for a motion to adopt the resolution of support that is included in your packet.
So moved.
Motion by O'Donnell.
Support.
Support by Sikora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. I will get that resolution to Sterling Heights and our engineers. Thank you, everybody. Department reports. As everyone probably knows, this weekend is our car. Oh, yes, this doesn't, I'm sorry, this does involve a budget amendment as well. We need to amend the fiscal year 2023 major street fund budget, increasing by $40,000, account number 202-000-502-000-M59-TAP, federal TAP grant, dash M59-TAP, and by $50,000, account number 202-449-975-000-M59-TAP, construction, non-motorized transportation, M59-TAP.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Terrence. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. All right, I guess I was just so anxious to get to my report. I was skipping half the agenda. So onto my reports. Everyone knows and is probably anticipating the car show on Saturday, August 13. It's going to be a great event. I know the folks over at USA Tire have been busy getting ready. Our DPW has been out and about, sprucing up downtown, getting some cement work finished. And I think they're going to be putting up light pole banner, our new light pole banners very soon. So it should be a, a great event. Starts at 8:00 AM and runs till 5:00 PM. I also want to mention the Utica Lions will be having a pancake breakfast right in front of the fire department. It was a great event last year. I believe I got the last meal. They sold out very quickly, if I remember. I think maybe by nine o'clock or something, they were sold out. So.
We can only hope.
So, yeah, if, if, if you have any availability on Saturday, stop, stop on by the car show. It's a great time.
And have a pancake.
The Grant Park basketball courts, I don't know if, if you haven't had a chance to drive down Han and, and see Grant Park, it's beautiful. Got these beautiful Chieftain black and orange sport court, they call it. Courts over there, both courts were resurfaced. I know they're also, they finished the painting today. They're supposed to be ready to be used sometime tomorrow. They're also re-netting all the hoops. This was made possible by a very generous donation from Puff. So we thank them. I know our residents are going to get years and years of use out of the, the new beautiful basketball courts. Another item, we had a resident who had a couple branches fall from his tree. We were able to, or I put out a call for helps, help and volunteers to help me go out there and saw it down. Thank goodness, a professional stepped in and saved me from having a cardiac arrest. RC Lawn Care and Landscaping, they answered the call and they were there bright and early this morning. And they helped the resident. They cut the branches, chopped them up, and hauled them away. Left it very clean and very beautiful. So I do want to give a shout out to Utica's own RC Lawn Care and Landscaping for their generous donation. One other item, and it's related to the car show, we, last year, we replaced the remaining old style residential street signs, mostly in the Flickinger neighborhood. There were a few down by St. Lawrence. We saved all those signs and we're going to be having a silent raffle. There was an auction, silent auction of all those street signs during the car show. I believe the tent's going to be right out front of City Hall. So if you had an old street sign and, and you, you have nostalgia about it, stop on by the tent and participate in the silent auction on Saturday. I think we have 67 or 69 signs total from a lot of different streets.
Seventeen different streets, I think.
Is it set? Yeah, 17 different streets, I think. And that's all I have. Does anyone else from council have anything they'd like to report?
I will. Two different things that we attended in the past week. The first is that Andy Appleby so generously invited mayor and council to come to the ballgame at Jimmy John's, and it was very enjoyable. So I just want to publicly say thank you to Andy and his team, and they did a really good job, as they always do with us. It was very nice. And yesterday, Smokey Bones opened. So if you haven't been there yet, you need to go. The grand opening was yesterday. The mayor had his picture taken a zillion times, and the food was great and it was a great time. So if you have a chance, get on down there and try the ribs, the brisket, the pulled pork and everything else that they have. It was all really good food.
It's delicious.
And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, councilwoman Terrence. Anyone else from council have anything? Nope. Chief, folks, like fire?
No, we're good. Like I said, Lions Club, Bernie's there at the crack of dawn, getting the food ready. So come on down. That's it for us. We're doing good.
Thank you for letting us use that.
You know, I would like to thank you, chief, for sending out the, the fire truck to the American Legion Community Picnic.
In the Heat Fest?
In the Heat Fest. It was very welcome. The kids got to run around and get sprayed a little bit. First, they sprayed the, used the hose, and then they got the hose turned on them by our guys. And they, I think it was welcome because it was very hot. I even heard a few of the adults say, you know, I'm thinking about running out there and getting sprayed. So, no, they, they represented us well. I know they had two ambulance runs during the event. They left and came back and, when they came back, all the veterans and the community members that were there were clapping for them. And so it was, it was a great event and we showed well. Yeah, thank you. Chief Cody, anything?
Yes. Just want to kind of continue on with auto show. The auto show has, some of the coordinators have been out and they are notifying the businesses and residents that they are asking for new parking downtown from 4:00 AM, the morning of the auto show, leading to four o'clock that evening, so they can take time to get cars in and we don't have to deal with things in the morning. So we're asking the downtown area businesses, notify their patrons and that not to leave vehicles overnight. As in the next morning, things are usually off to a quick start, usually by six o'clock in the morning. We're already starting to close some roads, starting to put some things into play to get this, this event going. So it's pretty well organized and it takes off pretty quick. So I guess I just wanted to put it out to the people that are watching. If they are coming downtown, make sure cars don't remain in the downtown area after 4:00 AM, leading into the car show. And that's on the 11th, I believe? 11th?
Saturday.
Saturday, the 13th.
13th, sorry. 13th. So just want to make sure people are made aware of that. There is, like I say, proactive efforts being made to notify people of that with flyers and they've been posted on the businesses and so forth. Another one is, I believe the mayor and myself have been receiving some traffic complaints from some of the residents. So I do put it out there that we are going to be taking some additional enforcement action in the residential sections as we move closer and closer to our starting of schools. We would ask that people take that into consideration. We have additional pedestrians out with the kids out of school. So there's a lot of kids moving around. So please take that into consideration in their driving. Everybody's got places to be. It's a busy summer, but safety is obviously the first thing you want to take into consideration. Lastly, employment opportunities with the police department as far as dispatch and patrol officers. If there's people listening that have family members or interested in position within the police department or have been through a police academy, please do not hesitate to city, to contact the city for the instructions as to how to proceed through the hiring process. So if they have any questions, please call. And that's all we have at this time.
I think, I think you have an, an agenda item as well.
Oh, I didn't know if that went under consent business. So, all right. Yep, we have, the one item that we do have today is one we discussed during budgetary considerations. We had put some money aside for updating some of the current optics for our patrol rifles. The optics that we had on there are moving on to 20 years old. We've had some issues with a few of them, and it's time to upgrade. We'd made provisions for that during the, the time that we were doing budgeting. We've selected an optic that our firearms bureau has, has looked at, tested. A number of companies stepped forward, gave us their products to kind of look at, to test and use. They decided on one from Vortex. And what we've done today is we have made a selection and we have a cost on updating all of our rifles. It's the $4,300, 43, 1992. We've already put that into patrol supplies in our existing budget. We're asking to expend that money for the sites that were planned for during the budgetary process. If anybody has any questions, I'll, I can field some questions regarding those updates.
If not, chief would be looking for a motion to purchase eight sites.
Make that motion?
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Excellent. Thank you, chief.
Mayor Council, thank you.
Mr. Lang, DPW report.
Yes, thank you. Mayor and council, you have before you request agenda item summary to request an extension of a contract with Hutch Paving. In the budget process, we budgeted for the improvements to Han Street and being that the, we, we had good luck with Hutch Paving with the previous contract that we were, that we're currently engaged in with Greeley Street, Messmore, and a portion of Custer. We've, and now that we're in a new budget year, we've reached out to Hutch Paving and made inquiries as to what their pricing might be and would they consider extending their, the contract that we're currently under with the previous road project, Messmore, Custer, and Greeley, that they would honor the pricing and do Han Street for us. They've agreed to do that. So they would retain the pricing that they have. There's been increases in asphalt products just since July 1, but they're not going to pass those on to us. They're going to retain their pricing that was out the bid for the previous projects. Those numbers, the preliminary number for Hutch Paving to do all of Han Street is 282,551 dollars and 60 cents, with a portion of it being a major street and the remainder of it being a local street. It would require a couple of motions and somewhat as follows. One would be the approval of extending the contract to Hutch Paving to utilize them to make improvements to Han Street in the same manner in which they did Messmore and the others.
Well, let's stop there. So he's looking for that motion, because we're going to end up just reading it.
Yeah, we could do that. So it would be to extend that contract to-
I'll make a motion to do that.
Support.
Right. Motion by Sikora, support by Terrence. Discussion by council. I would like to mention, I believe Hutch Paving said they're anticipating another asphalt price increase October 1st, too. Didn't they say that? So part of this, the rationale for doing it now is to beat the next increase, too. So any further discussion from council?
When are we anticipating having it done?
Septem-, well, I'm not sure we're having it done. We're looking to start doing it in September.
Start in September, okay.
So it would certainly be done, you know, relatively soon.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Your second motion, Mr. Lang.
Yes, the second motion would be the, and these are already budgeted items, so we don't need budget amendments. But it's a, a motion to approve the utilization of major street funds in the amount of 16,953 dollars and 10 cents for construction and 2,542 dollars and 97 cents for engineering and contingency. And that's for the major street portion of that project is from Brownell to Cass.
Cass. So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrence. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, this third motion would be for the utilization of local street dollars, again, which is budgeted for in the amount of 265,598 dollars and 50 cents and an additional 39,000, oh, is that a eight?
Eight thirty-nine.
Yep.
Eight thirty-nine and 78 cents for engineering and contingency.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrence. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to point out that the, the project will go off similar to the others. It's a, a mill and overlay, but it's specific to the, the lanes itself. I know there's some ancillary, maybe parking or even some paved areas. Those are not part of the project. Most, some of those are on private property. We won't be doing any approaches or some of that side possible parking or whatever. It's just the road itself, just to try to be clear on that. And I think that's pretty much it. We do expect to do all of Han Street. The only portion that, that might not be done is the, the actual segment of the crossing of Brownell, and they might skip Han Street as, or not Han, but Cass. Sometimes we skip the intersections because of traffic and, and that'll get paved through. So if you notice, there's like a, like at Brownell, we'll stop so that the Brownell traffic goes through or we'll stop on the other side. If you notice a gap, that's why. We picked it up in the next project. And it's just for traffic control is what it's for.
I think this is exciting. Driving down Han, it's, we're losing it quickly, you know, and-
Oh, yeah.
The sides are deteriorating very quickly. You're dodging potholes. So I think it'll be, this is very exciting.
Should be a good project. And we did verify with the engineers that the thought process was correct, too, as far as taking advantage of pricing before it goes up. So, anyway, thank you.
Nothing else?
Busy, busy.
Extremely busy.
And we trade in heat for rain, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lang. Treasury report. Mr. Paternoster.
I have nothing on the agenda, but I do want to remind the property owners in the city that the deadline for paying their property taxes is August 31. If you are a senior citizen, I believe it's 65, it might be 62, and you're struggling to pay your taxes- and you're struggling to pay your taxes and need a little extra time, do contact our office for a summer deferment application before August 31st. We can give you until the end of February without interest. That also applies to certain people with physical disabilities.
And that's all, sir?
That is all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
I would just like to say thank you for everyone that helped. We had a successful primary election last Tuesday. I couldn't do it without all of the election workers. And thankful to DPW for all of their help getting all of the equipment in the correct places and picked up for me. So I just wanted to thank them for that.
Excellent. From everything I heard, we had a very smooth day. There's no issues. So thank you for running a very tight ship and getting us through the election cycle. We appreciate it. Parks and Rec, Ms. Schmidt, this is the item that we amended the agenda for. And I will let Lori explain to us what this is.
Well, the budget amendment is for, we're looking for five hundred dollars. On August 18th, we would like to have the reptarium, just kind of like what they did at the library, where they have the reptarium come do the zoo-to-you type thing. We're gonna do that at Grant Park so that other kids can come who wasn't able to come to the other one. And they can come, you know, play with the reptiles. So that does require a budget amendment because we do have to pay them. And we'd like to get them little goodie bags, too. So we are looking for five hundred dollars being amended from our budget.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, I just want to say one more thing. The Parks and Rec put on, this is something I forgot to say. The Parks and Recs last Saturday put on a nice event for the protection of dogs.
That wasn't Parks and Rec. That was Sterling's Legacy.
Sterling's Legacy, okay, but you supported it.
But several members of Parks and Rec were there.
Yeah, I thought it was a Parks and Rec thing, so. No, that's Sterling's Legacy along with the Humane Society. That was a completely separate event. But yeah, a lot of us were there.
It was a great event.
Thank you. And our movie night, we were rained out.
Yes.
And that's been rescheduled for?
Twenty-fourth, that Wednesday, whatever's the Wednesday, so it's twenty-fourth.
Right, and that's a fun event. Utica Lions are gonna be on hand to sell snacks and hot dogs, I think. I didn't realize it, but this, this movie organization that puts on the movie, they also bring a band called the Mumford Sons or something like that.
It's fun.
Kind of a take on the Mumford Band, right? So it's a fun event. We're sad that we had to cancel the day of, but we were very wise to do so because literally the time it was supposed to start, it was pouring, pouring rain, so. We look forward to that. And what's the date for the reptarium event?
The 18th.
Eighteenth, very good.
That's, as Wednesday is well, right, Lori?
It's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday.
It's during the day.
Yeah, it's at noon.
Right.
Yeah, noon is two, okay.
And we've got all that listed on the city Facebook page and it's also running on the cable scrolls as well. Anything else?
No, just glad we're having events again. It's great.
Mr. Lang had something he'd like to say.
Not necessarily Parks and Rec, I maybe should have touched base on it. But if anybody noticed, one of our large oak trees had to come down in the park. And it had to come down in a hurry. Unfortunately, it split in three places longitudinal. And it was, could have been extremely dangerous. It was. So we had to call in a company to take that down for us in a hurry. So that'll, that's gonna require approvals for payment and things like that. But just if you, if you happen to notice that it's gone, that that was what happened.
Right.
It was an emergency situation we had to deal with.
Thank you. Thank you. City Attorney, Ms. McGrell?
I have nothing to add at this time.
All right. At this point of the meeting, we open up the floor for communication from the public for any item that is not listed on the agenda. Anyone speaking to council would be limited to three minutes and I'd like to open the floor now. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Fraser. This is my daughter Natalie. We live at 53180 Sherwood Lane in Shelby Township, Michigan. We are here today to just share information. We want to thank the mayor and the council for the opportunity to speak today and to Ms. Lori for providing us the information to come tonight and share what we think is a very exciting opportunity. So we are here as representatives for the Utica High School varsity dance team. The team is very excited to host their sixth annual golf fundraiser on September 18th at the Pine Valley Golf and Country Club in Ray Township, Michigan. We would very much like to take this time to invite the public, the council, the mayor, police, Department of Public Works, everybody and anybody is welcome to join us. It's the team's primary fundraiser and that supports their travel to Orlando, Florida in February for their nationals competition, which can get very expensive for the team and their families. Just a few details about the event. Golf is a hundred and twenty-five dollars per person, but that includes hot dogs at the turn and lunch after the golf. Four-team, four-person teams are not required. We can pair up singles or doubles if you don't have a four-person team. The day is a lot of fun, filled with lots of games on the course such as a Vegas hole, high-low score, closest to the pin, something called Golfzilla, which is really fun and interesting, and more. The team also hosts many raffles such as gift baskets, fifty-fifty, we have a wagon of cheer, a gift cardboard. It's just, a lot of effort goes into it and it's a really, a really nice event. So if you're not a golfer, you know, you can still join us. That's some twenty-five dollars for the lunch/dinner. It's more like a, like a brunch, you know, between brunch and, or lunch and dinner. And then there is an opportunity to be a hole sponsor. So if you can't join us, we can, we ask for a hundred dollar donation and we can have your company's name posted at the hole. And that's a nice opportunity to, you know, share your, even your family name. It doesn't have to be a company. Registration is due August 25th. Again, the event is on September 18th. We register at eight in the morning and kickoff at nine a.m. But we do need to get everything organized by the 25th. So more information can be sent to uticadance@gmail.com. Utica Dance, all one word, at gmail dot com. We have payment options that include Venmo and check. And I just, thank you so much for your time and I appreciate the opportunity to share this information. The only other thing I'll say is I do have some flyers that if I could leave with someone to distribute, so, maybe to you.
And you timed that about perfect.
Did I hit the three minutes?
You're right at the mark.
Oh, thank you so much.
If you have any electronic files, I would be glad to share those on our social media, you know, our cable channel. So feel free to mail me any electronic versions of this you might have.
Yep.
At mayor@cityofutica.org and I'll get those posted for you.
I really appreciate that. Thank you. The entire team appreciates that.
We appreciate you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good night, can I have the?
Anyone else from the public that would like to address council? Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Gregory Wiles and I live at 7360 Greeley Street. Okay? I would like to draw, draw this panel's attention to something that happened to me eight days ago and is still happening. It hasn't been resolved. Eight days ago, I had a branch fall, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned this 10 minutes ago.
Yes, sir.
I'm the homeowner, homeowner who had the branch, branches fall off his tree, a tree. And, and when I asked for clarification on whose problem that is, my first email went to the Department of Public Works, Mr. Lang. I did that on, on Thursday morning. I didn't get a response from the Department of Works until Tuesday morning, five days later. And the response from whomever that representative it was who spoke to me, whom I do owe an apology because I was upset and angry at her. But she told me over and over and over again that I own the property to the street of Greeley and that there is a, what, an easement. The City of Utica has an easement on my property and it is my responsibility to clean up those branches. Where did you get that information from that I own that property to the street? It is totally false. I don't. And I can prove that with my mortgage survey. Mr. Mayor, you got involved in it four days ago. I spoke to you four times on the phone, got upset with you, too, for the same reason. Not gonna get into this whole foreclose on my home thing. You know how I feel about that. But when you called me, you did the same thing. Mr. Wiles, you own the property to the street and there's an easement on that, so it's your responsibility to keep, to clean up the trees and the street where the trees fell in. My mortgage survey tells me that I do not own the property to the street. My property line is 20 feet short of the street. So the city owns all the property that the tree is on.
You're at three minutes, sir.
And owns the property that the branches fell on and obviously owns the street. Why is it I have not gotten clarification from any of you that it is still my responsibility when it's not my property?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else from the public have any comments?
So it's still not gonna be rectified. Absolutely amazing. You people are useless.
Anyone else from the public with comments? If not, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.